So good to have all of you with us today. And I will call the Paulding County Board of Commissioners work session for August 27, 2019 to order at this time. And welcome elected officials. We've got quite a number of those people that have Judge in front of their name today. We've got Judge Beavers and Judge Bucci and Chief Magistrate Judge Valbuena, Judge Beatty and Judge Norman. And who'd I leave out, guys? Gals? Just glad to have all of you with us today. I'll take that list now, Brian. And if you have your phone on, it'd be a good time to turn it off. And it's always, thanks sir, always so good to have Senior Chaplain Joey Meeks with us. He does so much for the county and he's going to bring us our invocation this morning and lead us in our pledge stand if you're able.
Let's all stand and salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Father, we love you and we thank you so much for the many blessings of life. And Lord, we thank you so much for our county and Father, the folks that makes it up. I pray God that you just build a hedge, Father, around our county, Father, even though that we know that we're living in evil days, Father. We thank you for elected officials, Father, that make it safe for us. I pray for the commissioners today and whatever that they are going through, Father, today and whatever they got a vote on, I pray that you give them wisdom. I pray that you give them guidance, Father. And we pray for each one that you just touch. We pray for our young people, the things that they're facing in the schools today that we never even thought about, Father. Pray that you touch them. We pray for everyone that's in public safety. I pray, Father, that you protect them. Pray, Father, that you keep them safe today. We love you, thank you and praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thanks, Chaplain Meeks, for setting that awesome tone. The August 13, 2019 work session minutes and the August 13, 2019 board meeting minutes are available for review. As we like to start out with positively Paulding this morning, there's something that happened just the end of last week, a new fire truck. And let's pay attention to that.
Started to talk about this three years ago. We budgeted into SPOST and we were able to get it approved through the SPOST. As a chief, it makes me proud to know that we had such great teamwork. Communication was fantastic. And not usually, these things don't usually fall together like they do at other departments. But I know that I've got some of the best in the state and probably in the southeast. And I know that as a chief.
As an old law enforcement officer, I know how critical it is for the mission that you guys have because when you're out on the scene and you need help, you guys are coming. That is an awesome truck. It really is. And so I'm so glad that we're here today to celebrate that.
In the 1800s, they think this dates back to the 1800s before motorized vehicles, a fire department would get a new wagon, a horse-drawn wagon. And it was a very exciting time for that city or that department. And all the surrounding departments and dignitaries and politicians and people from other agencies would come and be part of the ceremony to actually take the old wagon, take it out of the station, take the new wagon and physically push it in. So that's what we're going to do today.
Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Ms. Linda Taylor for retirement with 40 years of service to Paulding County. And proud to have Judge Valbuena come up and share with us a couple of things about Linda.
Not too much because I knew, I've been thinking about this and I knew if I talked too long, I'd start getting all teary and all. So we're just, I got sworn in September 13, 2002. It was my youngest son's first birthday. That's how I can always remember it. But so Linda and I, we are a few weeks short of 17 years together. And I tell you, both in the office and personally, we've been through a lot of ups and downs and it's been an amazing ride. I started about five or six years ago coming to the budget meetings with my letter saying, y'all, Linda's, we know when Linda's going to retire. And she's like three employees. I've got to have more help. And little by little, you know, I keep coming every year and asking for a little bit more and a little bit more. And thankfully, y'all have always, you know, worked with us and when you could give it, give me those extra people. And about two years ago, and then last year especially, we kind of reached the point where we had enough staff and we're doing well, where we were keeping up. And at the same time, not just keeping up, but kind of getting ahead of the curve for us. And at the same time, you would think, you know, when someone becomes a short timer like Linda, you sort of hear them saying, oh yeah, they're kind of coming in late and leaving early and not working. Linda did the opposite. About two years ago, she started gearing up with this idea that when I leave here, this is going to be the best, you know, the best magistrate court has ever been. And it is at this point. We got an award last year for case completion. Very few courts, like the top 10% of the courts in each level of court, class of courts got it. And we got it. First year they gave it, we got it last year. It comes out, you know, September, October timeframe. We're hoping to get it again this year. But the reason we got it is because the clerk's office does so much work. And Linda's been the one, you know, just pushing us and pushing us to get this stuff done. At the same time, making sure we're all cross-trained so that everybody, if someone's out, we can all kind of pick up and do what we need to do. We've, you know, cleared out all old closed files and shredded everything and loaded everything, scanned things in that we need to. I mean, it is amazing how much she's accomplished in the last two years. You know, obviously on top of the 15 before that with me. And so I can't, I can't tell y'all how touched I am to be able to come up and speak for her. There's a lot of people here, you know, professionally and family-wise that know her and know how much she does for all of us. It's amazing to think, you know, that she's been here working for the county for 40 years. When you talk about different stuff, I mean, we went from the dungeon in the old courthouse, you know, then we spent five or six years in the annex and then we've been here 10 years, you know. But then when you talk with her, she talks about the old courthouse. The old courthouse isn't sitting up there in downtown. The old courthouse is about half that size. And she worked there when it was just a little thing that probably none of y'all or hardly any of y'all remember. And she talks about, oh yeah, they did this addition and all this stuff and it's totally different, you know. And so when you listen to her and talk with her about, you know, the old days, it's truly inspiring to think of someone, you know, going 40 years. So, I mean, you know, we're almost in 2020. If you think back to 1980, where were you? Well, that's when she started with Paulding County and she's been here ever since. So, you know, think about where you were in 1980 and you come up to here. A lot of people in this room, you know, were probably in elementary school or middle school, you know. And you've been working for the county ever since then. And that's what she's done. So, yeah, I'm going to miss her tremendously. We all are and we're very excited. Friday is her, is her going away celebration. We're going to have our clerk, the new clerk, it'll be Kristi Moat. She's going to be sworn in at nine o'clock in the morning in probate court by Judge Anderson. And then from one to three downstairs in the cafeteria area, we're going to have a going away celebration. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Well, the Board of Commissioners are so proud to be able to present to Ms. Linda Taylor this plaque. It doesn't seem like near enough, but just says, presented to Linda Taylor in grateful appreciation for 40 years of dedicated service to Paulding County Government by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners. This day, September, well, it's September 3rd. It's almost that day. So come on up with whoever you want to bring up with.
This guy's my dad.
Linda's father, her daughter and son-in-law, and one of her sons. The Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Christine Stinchcomb for her outstanding accomplishment of being awarded Member of the Year at the state level with the Paulding County Tax Appraisers Office. And Mr. James Stokes is going to tell us a little bit about that.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We have a very proud announcement. The Georgia Association of Assessing Officials, better known as the GWAO, was established in 1948 with over 1,500 members statewide. Their primary mission is to promote integrity and professionalism in the assessment administration through education, leadership and cooperation. Each year, the GWAO holds an annual conference in July. At the conclusion of the event, one member is selected as Member of the Year. I am proud to announce one of our own exceptional staff members has been selected as the Member of the Year, Ms. Christine Stinchcomb.
Come on up, Christine. And as she's coming, I want to read the certificate of recognition from the board here. Certificate is presented to Christine Stinchcomb in recognition of outstanding accomplishment of being awarded the Member of the Year at the state level with the Paulding County Tax Commissioners Office. Very proud of you. You got any family members here? Okay. James, come on. Family members, come on.
Do you want to read one?
Oh, yes. Oh, we still have that to read?
Read it.
Yeah. Great.
This is the actual resolution that Chris was awarded at the summer conference. Whereas Christine Stinchcomb has been a member of the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials for many years. And whereas Ms. Stinchcomb serves as Chair of the GWAO Technology and GIS Committee. And whereas Ms. Stinchcomb has had a long and successful career spanning over 20 years with the Paulding County Board of Tax Assessors as a senior cartographer whereby she has advanced her profession and community and she has served. Whereas Ms. Stinchcomb was awarded the prestigious IWAO Cadastral Mapping Specialist designation, being only the third person in Georgia to receive this designation. And whereas Ms. Stinchcomb has served the Coalition of Geospatial Organizations and currently serves on the National Geospatial Advisory Committee. And whereas Ms. Stinchcomb, through her own time and resources, has become an IWAO instructor, generously offered her services to advance the educational opportunities for the assessment professions and the members of the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials. Be it hereby resolved that the Executive Board and the Executive Director of GWAO, on behalf of over 15 members of said Georgia Association of Assessing Officials, extend to Ms. Christine Stinchcomb our deep and sincere appreciation for her dedication and service to the organization and our heartfelt wishes for continued health, service and well-being. There it also be bestowed upon Ms. Stinchcomb the 2019 Annual GWAO Member of the Year Award of the Georgia Association of Assessing Officials by the Executive Board and the Executive Director this July 24, 2019.
Say, your husband's here?
He is not.
He's a... Got a special treat today. As an invited guest, we have Mr. Mark Townsell with United States Department of Commerce as Atlanta Regional, at the Atlanta Regional Census Center. And he's a census specialist, a partnership specialist. And Mark is here with one of his coworkers. And Mark, at this time, if you'd like to come up with us and come up and share a couple of minutes with us about the upcoming census.
Since Ms. Rebecca told me to keep it real short, I made myself some notes so I can stay on target. My name is Mark Townsell. I'm the partnership specialist with the U.S. Census Bureau out of Atlanta, the Atlanta Region. We cover seven states. My focus is on two counties, Cobb, where I live, and Paulding. So one, I want to thank you for this opportunity to talk to you. And then two, I want to commend you. Paulding County is well-positioned right now for a successful and complete count in the 2020 census. Under the leadership of Rebecca and obviously the support of your Chairman Carmichael, the preparation work, the planning that's been done, the dedication is impressive. Looked at some of the events that are scheduled. Ms. Rebecca has already identified some of the hard-to-count communities within the county. And all that's critical in order to achieve 2020, a successful 2020 census. So one, I want to thank you for your partnership. Thank you for your commitment and your dedication. Let me just take you through a couple of things. You know, as the 13th most populous county in the state, your numbers are very important. So obviously, the governor, there is a complete count committee at the statewide level and the governor is also counting on every county, right, for their, for their participation. Let me give you a very brief summary of where we are. Our mission is real simple. We want to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. It is just as simple as that. Nothing special. Currently, right now, we're engaged in what I would call address canvassing. So about 75% of all addresses have been identified throughout the country, including this county, really aerial, using imaging, et cetera. There's about 25% that we have to actually physically now go out. And what the canvases are doing is just, they have handheld devices and they have a list of addresses. They go around and check and say, yes, there is a residence, there is a house at that address. This again helps us, right, as we identify all the homes, all the households, all the places that we need to go and you need to go in order to achieve that, that count. So as you all meet with your constituents, I really just want you to remember three things. So I'll try to keep it simple. The 2020 census is easy, it's safe, and it's important. So as you meet with your constituents, if you could, if you could deliver that message, that would be very helpful. Why is it easy? You know, in the past, really up until 2020, all the census, all the responses had to be done via paper ballot, right? So you'd get this form in the mail, same 10 questions, and everyone had to respond via paper. Well, now this time for 2020, we've added two additional capabilities. One, online. So now folks, when they receive their mailing somewhere around mid-March, they'll be able to respond online. Now, why, why is that important in a place like Paulding County? You have over 165,000 people, 52,000 or so households. Well, in those households, about 92% of those folks have computers. And about 83% of them have broadband or internet connection. So that says about 83% of your population is already positioned, or the households already positioned, to take advantage of the online response, which means educating them, making them aware of this is simply all that we have to do. Obviously, there's a 17% or so population that doesn't have that capability. So we've added a phone capability. So again, now folks can respond by telephone. And on the other end of that phone, supporting about three dozen languages, people will be able to call in, give their identification number and respond to those same 10 questions with folks on the other end of the phone. And then lastly, if you either request one or if you haven't responded via phone or internet, then a paper ballot is still available, either by request or at the last minute as we get into the April timeframe, past the census day, and we have canvassers out there or numerators that will actually go door to door, those folks will receive paper ballots. So again, it's, you can, you can respond online, by telephone or using a paper ballot. It's safe. You know, as a census employee, we take a mandatory lifetime oath of confidentiality. And it's backed up by, by like up to, up to $250,000 in penalties and up to five years in prison if we violate that. And the Census has, Census Bureau has a wonderful record of not violating the confidentiality. And now with the online opportunity and the telephone, we've put in new tools and technologies again to ensure the confidentiality and the protection of that information. And thirdly, it's important. Why is it important? For two reasons, for power and for money. I mean, you all know that there's 435 congressional seats in the United States and that's it. And all those seats are portioned based on census data. It's a zero-sum game. In 2010, Georgia picked up an extra congressional seat, which meant somewhere in the country they had to lose one. So it's a zero-sum game, very important that we count everyone to maintain, to maintain that. Also, state districting is also tied to the census. And as you know, at the end of 2020, there will be some redistricting solely based on the census data. And now the money, over $675 billion is allocated annually solely again based on, on census data. And those federal funds are allocated and support programs like housing, education, healthcare, transportation, et cetera. So those funds, again, 675 billion, we want to make sure Georgia and the county of Paulding get our fair share. All of that again is based on, based on the numbers. Also, the census data is used to assist state and local governments and private sector in delivering economic development and goods and services to communities like yours and others across the country. So keep this in mind because a lot of times where there's need out there, the assumption is the census data or the allocation of these funds is based on need, which really not. It's based on numbers. So the money and the power follows the numbers, not the need. Again, why it's so important for us to get an accurate, accurate count. So for you, if you could just remember to, that the 2020 census is easy, it's safe and it's important. If you can deliver that message to your constituents, that would be great. So let me thank you in advance, one, for your commitment, certainly Chairman Carmichael, your commitment to supporting Rebecca's efforts. She's doing a fabulous job in organizing community leaders, government officials, faith-based organizations, all those critical, critical constituents that can help in identifying and handling a census. I also want to thank you in advance for your commitment, if you would encourage your constituents to participate in the, in the 2020 census. And then finally, I want to thank you in advance, if you would spread the word, and this is probably, I want to leave you with this one, if you'd spread the word, we are hiring. The, we try to hire over half a million people this year. We need to hire folks in Paulding County because as the canvases are out, as the numerators are out, they know the community. So if we can hire folks in Paulding County to help with that work, not only do they know the community, they're trusted voices in the community. Makes it a lot easier for folks to be receptive and to respond if they notice and feel like they're being challenged by folks in their community. So thank you. Do you have any questions for me? And hopefully I stayed under the three minutes that Rebecca gave me. Do you have any questions for me?
Great report, Mark.
Thank you.
Really enthusiastic to present it.
And the last, and the last thing I would say though is the resolution that you are, that's in front of you. Again, that's just another commitment or another example of your firm commitment to a successful 2020 census. And we appreciate that.
Thank you for being here. You want to introduce your helper there?
Yes, she's actually, she is, Pearl is new to the, to the census and has come out to what we call shadow to see what happens in something like this. And then in the back, Will is actually our media specialist. So since the meeting was open, I've talked to Rebecca and he just wanted to come in and take a couple of pictures and obviously something that we would then include in our newsletters, et cetera. So appreciate the opportunity for us to take part of this.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Is there any kind of like identifying marks so that citizens will know it's y'all?
Yes. Yeah, a couple of things. One, they'll have, they'll have clear badges, right, that they'll, that they'll be wearing. The other thing that we're doing is we're notifying, and I think I saw, I think I saw some people, we'll notify the sheriff's office and police departments so when we plan on coming into a certain county, they will know. So they'll know what to expect, when to expect us, what kind of identification we have. Also, we inform them as to what we will be doing and what we won't. We won't be asking for social security numbers, we won't be asking for personal data. It's really just to simply identify the house and then, and then when we, when we get to the numeration point, is get the census counted. So yes, there'll be clear identification. And like I said, we'll know, I'll make sure that Rebecca knows, so when we are in Paulding County, there'll be a heads up. And for the jobs, very flexible. I think the rate in, in Paulding is either $14.50 or $15 an hour. Put some cards in the back. But if you would tell your constituents to go to 2020census.gov/jobs, 2020census.gov/jobs and apply. And that, that could be for anyone that is in this room. They're very flexible hours. You basically give them your skill and tell them when you might be available and then someone from the Census Bureau will contact them. Is that anything else? Thank you, sir.
Today we have four bid awards. The first one is Discuss Action to Award the Construction Contract for the Ridge Road, Cochrane Store Road and the Bob Hunt Road Roundabout. This roundabout project to award it to the lowest responsible bidder, Barto Paving, in the amount of $1,894,934.11. So this is located in posts two and three, being an intersection. Got a couple of commissioners representing there, Ms. Pollard and George.
I'll be quick because I don't want to steal Georgia's thunder. I think this is a big day. But we have, we received four bids for this and the bids ranged from $1,894,934.11 to And we are pleased to recommend award to the lowest bidder, Barto Paving. Take me a minute, sorry. Go ahead.
Please steal my thunder, Tabitha. I have no problem with that. Little background information, you know, this, obviously it's located in post two, post three. Intersection currently operates as a multi-way stop intersection. It's a busy location with over 14,000 cars per day. There's pretty a good amount of delays in the AMP. There's pretty good amount of delays in the AM peak hour, particularly with the county schools in the area. In the conceptual preliminary engineering part of this project, Roundabout was identified as the best solution for the intersection in terms of long-term traffic. You know, the good thing about a roundabout, as you approach it, you have to slow down from a straight-line path. That basically reduces high-speed severe crashes. And also, it basically takes away any left-turn traffic that has to cross over. So again, it makes it much safer. At intersection where roundabouts have been installed over previous type controls, tip, most crash, most locations have been reduced by a thirty-five percent crash reduction, and injury crashes have been reduced by about sixty percent. For this project, it's like four bids are received, and the bids are reasonably close to each other. The low three bidders were within five-point-five percent of each other. That basically says that's, it's a pretty good bid to me. And this bid is twelve percent lower than our engineer's estimate. We've utilized Barto paving on past and current projects. They just finished up our subdivision paving project. They completed the one-twenty East Paulding Drive project, and they got a couple other projects with us. They've, they've done good work over the years, and I'd say enjoy working with them. They've also constructed two roundabouts in the metro Atlanta area. So they have experience in this type of work. This project is currently in our SPOST program and will be funded by SPOST, and it has a twelve-month completion date. And technically, it's not our first roundabout in the county. I think there's one at the Walmart at Aspen Drive, and there's obviously the one out here in front of the building. But this will be our first roundabout that the DOT has contracted out and will basically, obviously, will serve the most traffic. And I'd like to thank our engineering division staff for managing this project to get us to this point in time to award. And answer any questions, if y'all may have any.
Questions? Some good backup material, we appreciate that always.
Thank you.
Okay. Bid award number two is Discuss Action to Award the Purchase of Stream Mitigation Credits Required for the Richland Creek Reservoir Project, up to thirty thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-seven-point-four stream credits. And of course, this is in post four.
This is a different purchase. At, as we had two participants, and we are going to need to purchase both of them. So we, we need thirty-point-five-nine-seven, thirty thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-seven-point-four steam, stream credits. And we have, each bank has some of those credits, but they don't have all of those credits. So we're actually have, will purchase from two, and this will allow us, in the event that additional credits become available, because we do not have an offer for the entire thirty point, thirty thousand. So we're waiting on, hopefully, those to open up. And this will allow us to purchase right at twenty thousand credits. So Laurie, if you want to add?
Let me just add that these are for banks in our primary service area. Our core permit states that the preference, the first priority is to purchase them within that primary service area. Then there is a secondary service area that reaches a broader geographic area. And then, there's a third option, a lower-tier option, which is a payment in lieu of purchasing credits. So this is our first step in fulfilling the, the remainder of our thirty thousand credits that are needed. And, and we will continue. There's a supply and demand issue for credits in, in our primary service area. There's both Richland Creek and the Edwah Water and Sewer Authority also has a reservoir project and are purchasing a lot of credits at the same time.
Thank you, Laurie. Any other questions, concerns? Number three is Discuss Action to Award the Contract for Timber Harvesting Associated with the Richland Creek Reservoir Project to the Lowest Responsible Bitter, Triple J Logging, in the amount of one million two-hundred-two-thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars. Post four?
This is back somewhat similar. We are recommending award to the low bidder in this one. We had two bids, one at two-point-two million or two, two million two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars, and the low bid was one million two-hundred-two-thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-four.
Morning, Commissioners. I have a couple of slides here.
What's your name, sir?
Kelly Comstock with Brown &amp; Caldwell. I'm the program manager for the Richland Creek Water Supply Program. And happy to be here today. It's exciting to be able to be here to present one of the last things that we have to do on this project before we actually start filling the reservoir, and that's to clear the bowl of the, of the reservoir itself. And the reason we do that is there's a lot of trees and underbrush there right now. If, if it wasn't cleared out, it would become issues with, with boaters and other people on the reservoir. But more importantly, that material would decay over time and create decades of water quality issues within the reservoir itself. So this basically calls for a harvester to come in, take out all the trees, but then all the vegetation down to within six inches of, of the ground, they take that out and they remove it. We looked at different options of potentially burning the material versus hauling it out and gave the bidders the option to do various alternatives. And they, all of the bidders chose to move forward with actually removing all of that material. So the scope is for removing all that material within two-hundred-and-eight acres of the site that was not previously cleared. And it's important to point out, we must maintain that hundred-and-fifty-foot undisturbed vegetated buffer around the lake. So once the lake is full, you will have trees around the entire outskirts. So that's part of the permit, is maintaining that buffer. And so it really limits how, how many roads we can have going through there. And so clearing becomes a little bit more of a challenge. The other thing that we, we have to do is get it done before we start filling the reservoir, obviously. And you'll see from the map I'm going to present, the exit of the reservoir area is such that we have to do all of this before we start filling the reservoir, because it, as the water level comes up, it cuts off that access point. So that means we need to be done by December first, where we're targeting right now to start putting water in by around the fifteenth of December. Now, some of the, the challenges that we have, the, the timber itself that's on-site in this area has limited value. It has been timbered within the last twenty years, so it's, it's not really hardy timber that's available. So there's, there's a limited merchant value for that, for that material. Additionally, you'll see from the map I'm going to present, it's very steep terrain that we're, we're dealing with. Here, let me see if I can blow this up a little bit. Oops. A second. Yeah, okay. So you can see the cleared area that, that is up there is the area that's associated with the dam construction. I guess my pointer doesn't show. But everything that's in the black hatched area is the area that needs to be timbered. So you can see it's, it's really a bunch of different fingers that extend out to the outer extents of the reservoir area. The yellow dashed line is the buffer that has to be maintained. So you can see that there's long haul distances to get this material out to the various L locations, which are the loading locations. So the harvester will cut the trees and then basically bring them to those L locations, where they will be loaded into containers, either chipped into containers or loaded on trucks, and then will be brought out. The, all of the traffic will be sent out through the water treatment plant site and onto sixty-one. We are not going to be using Old Dallas Road for any of the, any of the access. So there will be a controlled turning lane and everything associated with water treatment plant access. So there'll be a significant number of trucks coming in and out of the site during this process. But it will be going onto, onto sixty-one, so there will be the safety of that, of that improved entrance. It'll be there where it's taking place. The, the terrain here, as I said, was pretty steep, and the limited amount of access area that's available really limited the number of bidders that we had. This is a significant operation. We did have two bidders that, that did present pricing, and there was a significant difference in value between the two. Triple J, Triple J logging was the least expensive. And in terms of the difference in price, a lot of that is due to the fact that because this is such a large project, a lot of timber harvesters have actually a lot of backlog right now. Because we had such a wet, wet winter time and springtime, a lot of timber harvesters have a backlog of, of other work. And so there, there's a limited availability of them out there. And obviously, the, the pricing reflects that. So our recommendation is to go with Triple J Logging, who's the, the low bidder for the project. They are able to get it all done by December first. They would likely start by September first to, to get that done. And then, everything moves according to plan. We'll be able to be in a position to start filling the reservoir pretty much as soon as they're, as soon as they're complete. So with that, like to address any questions?
They decided not to burn it because it's too much ash that could be in the water?
Yeah, it, it's actually a lot of additional labor for them associated with it. We, we gave them a couple options. There, there, there's a type of burning where they compile it. They, that, that was not something, that's a much higher-risk area, so they would have to do pit burning associated with it. And per the state requirements, they couldn't start doing that until October. So that, that sort of compressed the timeframe. It basically did not allow them to work throughout September. And as they looked at the cost of, of handling all that material, the burning, the blowers, everything associated with that, there was just a higher cost versus, versus what they could do to dispose of it. A lot of this chipped material they'll take and they'll use for fuel wood at some of the different mills and stuff. And, and so, once again, a lot of their pricing is dependent upon how much that they can get, if any, of a credit back from the mills for the value of that.
Other questions? Thanks for being here, Kelly.
Thank you very much.
Number four is Discuss Action to Award the Construction Contract for the Hangar One renovation at the Paulding Airport to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible Bitter, Stryker Contracting LLC, in the amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. Of course, in post two.
Yes, this bid, we had one, two, three, five participants. So we're pretty confident that the bid is a good bid. They ranged from three-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars to four-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty dollars. And if you don't mind, just for a second, before Scott comes up, so I don't have to come back, I'm going to, this is, the funding for this is actually through the general fund fund balance. The funding for two and three were actually through reservoir program funds. And the funding for the first bid award was actually SPOST.
Good morning. As you know, this is an airport project, and it's, it's been sort of a long time getting here. But I, I, I'm pleased and hope you'll agree that this is worth the wait. Based on the bid results, we have significant savings by contracting out in the method that we're using here through the county process and with county assistance. And I think that's the key to getting the price down, as well as expanding the competition on this project. We did have good results. The contractor, parent low bidder here, is a striker. They've got experience and actually do a lot of renovation work, from what we can tell. They have a good rating. And we're going to work with them to finalize a contract with your approval and move forward. This is just the starting line, though. We've got a long way to go. The, the project is a hundred-day duration. And because of the airplane movements and things like that, it's going to be some unproductive, unproductive time. So we're allowing about sixty days of actual work in that hundred-day period. If you approve, once we get the contracts going and, and the contractors started by mid-September, we should be done by the middle of December. And weather, you know, of course, being a factor in that, and we're looking at some drier weather, hopefully, here in the fall. A couple of other things, just to review the purpose. The project will take the existing twenty-four thousand square foot or so corporate hangar at the airport and divide it into three spaces with a fire separation wall. That will allow us to bring unfueled planes into the, into the hangar. It will give us two separate rentable spaces as well. And the end result for the county is, is really broadening our tax, tax base. And so we're glad to work with the airport in this effort, which will actually come back to the county and pay for itself, hopefully, in short order. Our project manager for this will be Bruce Coyle. He's instrumental in carrying and answering bid questions, as well as working with the airport's architect, Jim Finney. And Terry Tibbetts has been very involved all along the way and will remain involved, as, as his staff will be involved in, will carry out coordination with the contractor with the forecast on the weather and moving planes in and out, so that the work can be done safely, which is obviously very critical. As I said, it's a hundred-day completion date contract, once we give notice to proceed. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. Terry's in the back here also. Any specifics, he'd probably be better able to answer. Be glad to take any questions.
During the construction of this wall, the planes that are using the hangar now, are they moved out of the hangar to, to?
Yes.
To remove the risk there from damaging?
Exactly. There, there's little, if any, work that can be done with the planes in the hangar.
Is that part of the weather contingency there?
That is, that is factored into the time. So we do have a, a good bit of non-productive time built into the schedule to allow for that to happen. And with good weather, it could be done as quick as, inside a kind of sixty-day timeframe. And with other things that have to go on that can't be adjusted to the contract, for the contractor, it would extend out to the mid-December date.
What will be the involvement with our own fire department, Scott, as far as oversight?
Well, like any project, the, the work will be inspected by staff, community development inspectors, as well as the fire marshal. Fire marshal has, has been very helpful in, in making sure these plans meet requirements. There are some modifications, which I didn't cover. There's a good bit of modifications to the structure itself in adding two-hundred-and-fifty feet of walls that are actually averaging over forty feet tall, with a double layer of, of fire-rated sheet rock on both sides with insulation. There's a lot of adjustments to the piping and, and the fire sprinkler system that have to happen, and all that will have to meet requirements. And so Chief Pelfrey's group will be looking at this with us to make sure we're meeting all the requirements that have been specified in the plans. And it'll be hand-to-hand, really, with, with all of our staff.
Questions?
I'll say, I'll say something else. Not necessarily questions, Scott. You can sit down if you want, but you can stand there if you'd like to as well. Lot, there was a lot of discussion around this wall. Get to finally use the line that Terry wants to build a wall and he wants us to pay for it. But there were three options that we have for this wall, and some of those haven't been discussed as much lately. The first option was obvious, to build this wall. And I guess the initial projection of cost was a lot higher than this, than this has turned out to be. There was another option of doing a wall, just straight down the middle, cut the hangar in two and fix the fire code issue there. The problem with, problem with that issue is that we have a plane that needs a space bigger than half of the, half of the hangar. So that was an option, but it was a less desirable option. And then the third option is obviously do nothing, which doing nothing would turn, turn a tax-paying vehicle out of the, out of that hangar. And so I just want to, I, I just want to kind of recap those options, as we've had a lot of discussion to get to this point. And I want to, I want to share a little story, if I can, because the public sees what happens up in these meetings, but the public doesn't always see what happens as we're working together to, to prep for this. And when this first came out, it was, it was, it was discussed in, in an urgent manner. And, and we had a lot of rushing around and talking. And as you know, commissioners can meet one-on-one, but more than two of us together, and it becomes an issue legally. So there was a lot of running around and over here and back there and over here and all that. And the day that this came out, Terry offered to spend his lunchtime going two-on-two with commissioners to help answer questions and try to help us be comfortable with the whole project and the way it was working and, and to answer questions. And as one who doesn't enjoy skipping a lunch, I do appreciate the time you spent with us, Terry. Chuck and Sandy met with him while I went and got lunch. And then, after that, Brian and I sat in with, with Terry, and we talked it through. And I still had some issues with the whole, there were a lot of concerns mentioned. I won't, I won't go over them here. But I wanted to share a story about what happened after that meeting. We talk about working together, and, and this is just a good example of that, so I wanted to share it. wanted to share it. Sandy came to me maybe ten minutes before that meeting started. It was, it was right up on our two o'clock meeting. And she said, what do you think? And I said, well, if you've, if, if the board wants to move forward, I'll respect the will of the board, but I've got some concerns, so if you wanna vote on it today, I'll be a no. And, and she said, okay. And then she said, where's Brian? Because she had to go find Brian. Did, you know, the one-on-ones all over the, all over the hallways kind of thing. And we came in and we sat down and they had the prayer and the pledge and all of that. I leaned over to Sandy and I said, what are you gonna do? And she said, I think let's table it. And that decision to table it and answer the concerns of the whole board resulted in a hundred and eighty thousand dollar savings. Scott used the term worth the wait, and it certainly was worth the wait for us to take a step back and not rush into something because we were told there was an urgency, but to take a step back and make sure that we were doing the right thing the right way. And in the end, taxpayers saving a big pile of money. So thank, thank you to Sandy and the board for, for doing that. And, and it was just encouraging for me to see that. That occurred to me, actually, this morning. I was on the way to get breakfast, and that occurred to me, and I thought, I'm gonna share that. So that's all I have to say about this wall.
Thank you, Ron.
I just wanna say, Terry, thank you for your patience. I know it's something that we need and we have needed for a long time, but thank you for your patience. This board has worked very hard. And Scott Green, thank you so much for the time that you've put into it. We, like I said, we've worked very hard at this wall, and I think it's something that we can all be happy about.
Reports from committees and departments? We have none. Public participation on agenda items? We have Ms. Kathy Helms to talk about new business number two, which involves resolution nineteen dash twenty-six.
Good morning.
Just a clarification there, Dave. She's talking about item number two. You just, the resolution you mentioned is item number three. Was that just a misstatement or?
It's new business number two.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just the public hearing on rezoning case two thousand seven dash zero four dash Z.
Yes, okay. I don't know. I sent everybody an email yesterday afternoon. It was at, right before five o'clock. I don't know if you got a chance to read it. But basically, this is about the use of existing sewer systems that we're putting residential housing on. When we, in, in April, you approved an expansion of the sewer in that area that to tie into a private sewer system, and the county is paying eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. This PRD from two thousand and seven is required to be hooked into sewer because it is a PRD. So they will be utilizing this sewer system that we're just spending eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars on. You also, last month, the, the subdivision that was approved at Moses is also gonna be on sewer. Sixty-three percent of the property tax we pay now goes to the school board because of our lack of job-producing businesses. The school board has zero control over residential building. Until we bring these job-producing businesses to Pauling County, every subdivision will continue to raise costs for the school system and all government services, causing more tax increases. The sewer system has a, a specific capacity. And once we reach that capacity, it's gonna cost us millions to put in another sewer treatment facility for any commercial work if we're hooking all residential into these And again, you know, against the sewer is the, the tax increases for the extra demand on government services, including sewers. So yesterday, after I sent the email, I thought, well, I'm gonna go in and find this Seventh and Juniper's registration at the Secretary of State's office. And maybe I can find a registered agent, just to see what I can find out about this company. What I found out was, and Frank? What I discovered was, on August twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, the only Seventh and Juniper LLC in the state of Georgia was administratively dissolved by the Secretary of State, then Governor Kemp. So this company name that is listed on the agenda doesn't even exist. And this, this application is twelve years old. So I do see a lot of good things that are happening on this agenda. So I don't wanna just be critical, but I'm really concerned about the sewer. And of course, the agenda item number eight with the aviation academy, that's probably the most exciting thing on there for me. Thank you for your time. And really, I don't know that you should even be addressing a, an item for, regarding a business that no longer even exists. Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, discuss action on two consent agenda items. Number one is adopt ordinance nineteen dash zero four, amending ordinance seventy dash fifty-three, approving speed limits and approving the use of speed detection devices on certain county roads. And number two is adopt resolution nineteen dash twenty-five, a resolution of Pauling County, Georgia, supporting the twenty-twenty census. Would any of the commissioners like to move either of the two consent agenda items to regular business? Hearing none will leave them where they are and move on to old business, which is discuss action to adopt resolution nineteen dash twenty-four, confirming executive session at the August thirteenth, twenty nineteen, two PM Board of Commissioners meeting for the purpose of pending a potential litigation. Under new business, number one is a, a public hearing on the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant application. At this time, I will open the public hearing and call Colonel Chad Hutton to the podium to give an introduction and overview of this Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Thank you, Colonel Hutton, for being here.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all. We've been using this grant for quite some time at the sheriff's office to help supplement our budget for equipment and different items. This year, in the grant, what we're, they're proposing a little bit over sixteen thousand dollars for us, and we're wanting to use the funds for tactical vest and night vision. With our tactical vest, just like any manufacturer, they have warranties on them. And so they only warrant them for five years. So we have to replace these vests every five years. A tactical vest now is running about three thousand per, per person. So it kind of tells you the cost of them. They're pretty expensive. Of course, a tactical vest is different than our personal body armor that we wear in everyday uniform. Tactical vest is designed to stop rifle rounds. So it's, it's, it's a lot heavier and it's more cumbersome, and our, our tactical unit utilizes them. So the night vision, the technology's constantly changing, and it's getting better and better. So the night vision will help replace some old units that we have, and they're like first-generation night vision. So they're, they're at the end of their, their life. They're, they're not supported anymore by the manufacturer, so if they break, we can't send them and have them fixed. They're not, they're not messing with it anymore. So that's what we're planning on using the funds for this year, if, if y'all grant it. I'll be glad to take any questions. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. Well, I need to also open it up, open the podium up to the public, if anyone would like to, to speak on this use of funds, on this business item. Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing and we'll move on to new business number two, which is also a public hearing on rezoning case two thousand and seven dash zero four dash Z. And when I ask, as I open the public hearing on new business number two, I'd ask Mr. Robinson, Chris Robinson, to come forward and give us some background information.
Good morning. This particular rezoning came in back in, actually, late two thousand and six and was moved several times during the year in two thousand and seven, of which it finally became before the Board of Commissioners in November of two thousand and seven. This case was a rezoning to PRD and B1. It was a total of seventy-three point one acres, with fifty-four point eight being the residential portion and eighteen point three being a, the commercial portion, it'd be one general business. This, this property is located at Dallas-Neebo, Neebo Road. It's on the southwest corner, across from the Ingalls, which was zoned and came into effect at that time also. This application, of course, was recommended by the planning commission back in, in that time period, four oh two, for a hundred and seventy-one lots of, of single-family residential. There was, or there still is attached to this zoning twenty-three stipulations, which would remain in effect if it's approved. And one of those stipulations I wanted to bring up is five hundred dollars a lot to the school system, and that's still in effect. Now, during that timeframe of two thousand and seven, of course, there's, there's a lot of, a lot of things happened. I'm not saying one way or the other for this application, but saying there was a lot going on. I happened to be here. There was a drought that, and we placed a moratorium in October on any rezonings in that southeastern section of the county, or actually in the whole county back then. There was also a moratorium that went in effect during that timeframe in the southeastern section, because we had had a study done on future development of that southeast quadrant, which was associated with Cobb County sewer, as well as development standards. And there was, it was in August or September two thousand and seven, a overlay district that was placed on that area of the county, which overs, also overlays this particular property. That was actually enacted prior to this being adopted and, and approved. That overlay district requires above and beyond standards than what a PRD can just be. A PRD can be all eight thousand square foot lots. The overlay would require this PRD, if it's approved, to be limited to sixty percent of the proposed lots being eight thousand, with the other forty percent would have to be ten thousand square feet or larger. And then looking at the overall impacts of that low-density quality overlay district that allows green space and landscaping architectural standards of that potential development, you're still, your, your lot count, which was originally a pro, proposed for around a hundred and seventy-one, would drop into the one forties, maybe even a little lower than that, depending on the terrain and topography out there. And so that's a little bit of the history on that. Like I said, there's twenty-three printed stipulations that, you know, we can make available for anyone that has a, a question or comment on that. And I know that the applicant has representation here today. I didn't know if you had any questions I could help you.
Yeah. Go ahead.
No, you first. You're up.
All right. I, I was noticing in the backgrounds, though, all that is, is gonna be gravity-fed. We were talking about the sewage thing. And it's gravity-fed to a pump that was put in place for this back then, is that correct?
This, this lift station that would support this subdivision was installed by this developer back at that day, and it is to the south side of this property, right there near the Dallas-Neebo Road. And it was sized to service this development, as well as the Ingalls across the street, which it services now.
Thank you. With, with that question asked, just to tie into it, I know Brian's got a question. Does anyone recall it was two million dollars of private investment?
I don't recall exactly what the cost was, but I know when you, a lift station is, is not, not a low-cost item, and, and it was sized to carry a larger amount than what actually was connected to it back then.
Being in that low-density quality residential overlay, PRD has a per acre max of how much compared to what it is now?
Three, three units per acre.
It's PRD.
It's PRD.
But being in the, that overlay, does it stay at three or does it move?
It actually drops to two point six units per acre maximum. And it does require that the larger required lots, the ten thousand plus, be along the periphery of the overall development.
And, and if you said it right, so roughly twenty-five percent of this is set aside for commercial land-wise?
That's correct. It's eighteen-plus acres that was planned for some retail along the corners of Dallas-Neebo and Neebo Road, right there.
And that's, but that's in the Sweetwater Basin, which was eventually supposed to go to Cobb County, right?
That's correct. It's actually the, the lift station that's down there, actually, is, is a forest mine that goes back up Nebo Road, back up toward Coffermane at this moment.
And then a comment about your statement on the school system. I know Ron wasn't even born then, but.
I was, but barely. And also, Brian and I are about the same age. He looks older, but I.
[laughter]
It, it shows in the backup material that it's a volunteer stipulation. So how'd, how'd that work back then?
Well, back in two thousand and six, mostly two thousand and seven, there was a lot of concerns with, with the impacts on school system, as there are today for residential development. And back then, a lot of the developers, which, back then, there was a lot going on with, with residential development, and they all agreed to voluntarily donate five hundred dollars at the time of platting, final platting for these, for the school system, in which, at this moment, with some of the, the residential developments that have come back since the, the recession, I, I, we have collected about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars from different developers over the past four or five years that has been directly sent to the school board. And so this is one that was in that time period, and it, and they had volunteered to do that back then also. One thing I wanted, on the low-density quality overlay, the PRD requires fifteen-foot perimeter buffers, the low-density quality requires twenty-five.
You mentioned the applicant's present, and this is a public hearing. I'd like to ask that the applicant comment.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Chuck Rand, and I'm with SN Engineering Group, and I'm representing Dallas-Neebo LLC, who is the owner of the subject property. You know, we are excited that the commission is, is bringing this back in front of this body to come to a conclusion or a decision regarding the rezoning application from two thousand and seven. A couple of things that I, I do wanna make light of, as far as the ownership issue, I believe Ms. Helms made a comment about Seventh and Juniper. When that was administratively dissolved, Dallas-Neebo LLC took over the responsibility and ownership for this parcel. So as far as the items that were described before with respect to the sewer lift station, station, two million dollars is pretty close to hitting the number. That was invested into the sewer system in order to facilitate sewer to Ingalls, and again, the rest of the corners that are at Dallas-Neebo and Neebo Road. The, the owner of the property is agreeable to all stipulations, as they were in two thousand and seven, even with the voluntary stipulations that, that are provided. And any questions that you have, I'll be more glad to answer when we get to that portion.
Thanks, sir. Any other folks in the room, in the audience here, like to speak on this agenda item?
I would like to.
You need to come forward, please. You need to come forward, please.
My name is Pritch Kitchens, I live at, on Faithfuller Road. I'm not against rez, uh, zoning or nothing about it. What I wanna know is what is the law after something has been sitting there all these years? Zone or not zone? Then it comes before and then they wanna build houses. I think it ought to go before your planning commission again and be rezoned. Before anything's done. But what is the law on it? Stipulation, would it be legal or unethical to do it?
I'm gonna ask our county attorney if he has any...
Yeah, I would, I would like to know that question answered to it.
Absolutely. This matter went before the planning commission back, I wanna say it's two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. Uh, they me, made a recommendation of approval, uh, I think four in favor, zero opposed, and I believe two abstained from that. That was forwarded to this body with their recommendation, uh, their, their recommending approval. Uh, this body ended up tabling the application. And the application remained tabled now for, I wanna say it's probably twelve years. The Dallas Nebo, uh, I believe it's Mr. Charles Brock, uh, who was affiliated with, uh, the Seventh and Juniper. He brought it to the attention of Commissioners that he would like to have this, uh, looked at again because he never received a decision from the county on its application, on his application for rezoning. At the last meeting, the last Board of Commissioners meeting, this, this matter was, uh, removed from the table for consideration here. So, one of the items that is very important is that the public have an opportunity to comment on a pending zoning application. Typically, when the planning commission has rendered a recommendation in the case, there is not an additional hearing before this board on a matter. It was right, my recommendation, particularly in light of a new case that, I say it's relatively new case, that came out of, um, I think it was out of Jasper County. Uh, but there, the Supreme Court said when there is more than a three-month delay, that was those are the facts in that case, when there is a significant delay between the public hearing and the decision-maker ultimately rendering a decision on it, that the public has not had a meaningful opportunity to comment. And because in this case, the delay was twelve years, uh, it was my recommendation that if the board decided to remove it from the table and begin reconsideration, that this be noticed, uh, as a regular zoning case, but that that public hearing occurred before this board, uh, since it's technically before this board right now and not in front of the planning commission. So I believe the zoning staff sent out the notices, uh, and that is where we here, where we are here today so that the public can have a meaningful opportunity to submit its input and comment on the application.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kitchens.
Jason, could you give an opportunity, uh, could you, could you give an opinion on, um, the issue of carrying forward, uh, a, a request by an entity that no longer exists?
Sure. Great question. Um, under Georgia law, Title fourteen in particular, corporate code, an LLC, when it administratively dissolves, there is a statute that allows, uh, basically those that have an ownership interest in that LLC or those that have an equitable interest in that LLC to wind down the affairs of the LLC, to basically handle those things that are still, uh, hanging out there unresolved. This would typically be a common thing, uh, for winding up that LLC to the extent it administratively dissolved as Mills, Ms. Helms indicated, I think, back, uh, back several years ago.
Do we need to see any sort of, um, documentation that authorizes the entity that was mentioned just a minute ago to handle this affair?
We can certainly ask for it. Uh, I believe that, uh, Mr. Rand can probably, we can meet with him after and see what he has.
And I have another member of the public that has indicated would like to speak.
Last month or a couple of months ago, you talked about putting that sewer in out there, one point six million, which half coming from us, half from a private citizen, supposed to be for commercial, if I understood it right. Now we wanna put homes at Engles and we wanna tap into the sewer that we said was going to be used for commercial? Am I understanding that right?
I, I defer to Lori, but i- it's, it's not just commercial, it's a whole area.
Now the thing was said last month or two months ago about this LLC coming in. Now we wanna bring this LLC in up at Engles and have something to do with the sewer, is that right? That we're just gonna pay to put in? Am I right or wrong?
This, um, development that is under discussion at the public hearing does not go to the, um, the Ridge Road sewer improvements that were discussed and agreed to within the last couple of months. This is at the Engles Pump Station, which we refer to as our Nebo Pump Station that pumps to Copper Mine.
Okay, so this one down here by the Kroger, that's nothing to do with this one going in that we're talking about now?
No, sir. Uh, it goes into an existing lift station that is further north, um, that pumps to Copper Mine. Now that pump station does, the pump station that is, that was under discussion a few months ago does pump to this Engles Pump Station. But it is not tributary to that pump station that, that sewer improvement down at Ridge Road.
This is too high-tech for me and this is too fast for me here, but they will have, so they will not affect anything to do with that sewer that's going in there, I say by, down by the Kroger?
No, sir.
Capacity-wise or nothing?
No, sir.
Okay.
I think the link between what you're talking about and what this one is, is the developer and the private money that was mentioned for the, the sewer system that went in with the Kroger, um, was private money. And the board, um, Chuck, I know Chuck worked really hard to get that through and before he was here Vernon Collette worked very hard on that as well. Um, county voted to, we voted to, um, to do that sewer work, uh, there at the Ridge Road where Lori just spoke about. Um, and that was the right thing to do, it was partnership with that developer. Uh, and, um, uh, it, it wasn't the most popular vote that we've cast 'cause a lot of people cause...
No, it wasn't.
No, I know. But, um, sometimes the thing that you believe is the right thing to do is not the popular thing to do. And so the board voted to do what was necessary, um, to make, make sewer in that area work, to fix an issue that was, uh, had by that Kroger. That Kroger does a, a lot of volume. Uh, it's one of the busiest. And so we, I, I don't wanna say pay back or make things right, but the private investment was considered and the board extended the sewer to, to be able to reach the commercial properties in that area. The same developer, the same developer who was mentioned, in, is involved with this, so the developer is the same. And then this property that's being considered is, like Lori said, goes into a different, different part of the sewage system. Um, obviously would go into overall capacity of our sewer system, but not specifically the sewer capacity that was added there at Ridge Road. Does that help clarify it any?
Excuse my skepticism, but for twenty-three years I lived out there, nothing at all. Now all of a sudden, private and public money going into a sewer, they're coming out to two miles down there at the Engles and all of a sudden it's just, whoa, we got all this big things going on, but for twenty-three years, nothing. And if I'm right, Mr. Brock's involved in all of this somehow?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Teague?
Yes.
Um, you know, it is a situation to where most of our infrastructure in this county has been put in, you know, that, by private individuals.
I don't know that.
Well, yeah, developers, you know, over the years. And, um, and I am thankful about that.
Well, like I said, just seeing twenty, for twenty-three years and all of a sudden, everything's opening up and the same guy involved at our expense, some were on board.
Okay, I will ask if there's any other of the public that would like to speak on this matter?
Can I speak again on that matter?
Yes.
I just think this needs to go back before planning and zoning. I don't believe that a decision should be made on an application that's twelve years old with the name of a company attached to it that no longer exists. I think it just needs to start over. Thanks.
The, the reason that I think there's gonna be hesitancy there is 'cause we're no longer accepting applications for PRDs.
For PRDs, exactly. And there's a reason we're no longer accepting applications for PRDs. The reasons that we're not accepting applications for PRDs have been discussed over and over. So now we're gonna go back to a twelve-year application and say it's okay to put this PRD in. Why is this PRD different than, than future PRDs? This is not an existing PRD. This was an unresolved application by a company that no longer exists. Thanks.
Anyone else like to speak? I thank you all for your participation and I'll close the public hearing at this time. New business number three is discuss action to adopt resolution nineteen dash twenty-six approving the de-annexation of tax parcel one forty point three point two point zero zero two in post one.
Morning, everyone. Um, this is a somewhat unique situation. Most of the time, um, we receive annexation requests. We have received a de-annexation request, um, that is governed by state law, specifically, um, official code of Georgia annotated, section thirty-six dash thirty-six dash twenty-two. And the first step in a de-annexation request is for the county that would receive the property back as an incorporated property to approve a resolution stating that they are agreeable to that de-annexation. Um, this request was submitted on behalf of Highlands Residential Development. It is for a one point two-five acre tract located on Charles Hardy Parkway, um, in currently the city limits of Hiram, and the map has just been brought up for us. Um, Highlands has a contract to purchase a thirty-acre tract behind that, um, which has been zoned R fifty-five in Paulding County. Um, City of Hiram did not adopt the R fifty-five zoning designation, so they cannot rezone it to that. And I believe that is the main reason for this de-annexation request. Um, I believe the applicant is here if you have any questions for them or for me. Um, like I said, the de-annexation process, the first step is for the county to approve the resolution, but the approval of the de-annexation rests solely within the power of the municipal authority. So if this is approved, we will transmit it to Hiram for them to act upon.
This piece of land would add to the R fifty-five? Would, would have to go back through zoning to make that happen?
It would have to go back through zoning 'cause it's currently zoned, I believe, R two, City of Hiram, which R two and Hiram and Paulding County are identical, but it would have to go through, to be rezoned to R fifty-five.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Lemon, appreciate it. New business number four is discuss action to adopt revision to Civil Service Rules, Chapter Four, Recruitment and Selection, Section Seven, Employment of Relatives. And we're, uh, pleased to have Mr. Acker here to help us address this issue.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, as y'all are aware, we've had some recent discussions regarding our current policy on employment of relatives. And, uh, over the years, we've obviously grown quite a bit. We've got, uh, much larger employee population, we've got more departments, bigger departments, uh, more geographic locations, as well as more wor, work crews throughout the county. And so we discussed having some broader consideration to employment of relatives. Uh, the proposed policy identifies the same relative relationships we had before. Um, but in this case, we're saying we'll allow some employment of relatives within the same department, but still with some restrictions. And I point that out to also, I think it's imperative to say first and foremost, good hiring practices rule above all else. So in doing this, it doesn't mean that it opens the door for simply favoritism or anything of that nature. Uh, we still need to apply good practices when we're hiring, get the best applicants for the jobs. And that's also a, a matter that keeps things in check with this. Uh, the key changes on the policy that would allow, uh, relatives working in the same department, as long as they're not supervising, one relative's not supervising another, they're not reporting to the same immediate supervisor, they're not at the same shift and location, and there is a overall prohibition that spouses cannot work in the same department. Um, and I think when I talked to you, Commissioner Stover, that was one of the things you said is, can you clarify for me the key points? And, and those are the key points of the proposal. Uh, tried to take the existing policy we had and also made it a, a little bit better in terms of readability and, uh, apply it to where we are today as opposed to when it was written. And I don't know when that was off the top of my head, about several years ago. Certainly be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
So, so basically, just so the public understands, so when you say that, so basically as far as departments, like, say the fire department or the water department, who has different locations, it can apply to them more than it can, say, uh, most departments.
Right, so, uh, several departments, particularly a smaller department, I'll use mine as an example. Uh, myself included, we have a grand total of five people in the HR office. Uh, there's no two ways around it. I can't rearrange things so that I hire the, the relative of anybody else in my office. Um, I couldn't say, well, we're just gonna have this person report to this one, we're gonna have this person report to, uh, another supervisor, and I've gotten around it. No, they would be in the same physical location, same shift, that would avoid that being an option. Uh, when you're talking about maybe a fire department, you could have somebody at one station, sibling or any other relative for that matter, working at another station. They're not reporting to the same immediate supervisor, not at the same geographic location. That would be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Acker.
Sure. Any other questions?
In the case of someone like our county administrator, that everyone reports to, through the board, you wanna clarify that?
Frank and I have talked about that a lot. I think, uh, he and I would both take the same approach that when it comes to his position or even my position, it would probably be inappropriate for either of us to have a direct family member or relative working in the county. Uh, I think, uh, that certainly opens the door for the impression, uh, or the perception of conflicts of interest. And, uh, I think as we go through this process and we adopt this and allow folks to do it, department heads are still gonna have to take that into consideration, uh, if they feel like they have concerns about that. If you might have a situation where relatives could somehow or another have, uh, impact on, uh, financial decisions being made in the department. You, you certainly don't want to allow relatives to be able to do those type things, to make decisions regarding employment decisions. Um, so, in, in general, you just have to take the good practice of, you gotta avoid conflicts of, conflicts of interest where they're evident.
I'll, I'll say that the proposed change, um, is well-done and I appreciate your work on it. And if it's going to be done, I think this is the manner that you would want it to be done. There's a phrase that was used, Brian, Brian said it just a minute ago, opening the door. And it opens the door for some, it's a, I wanna be careful how I say this. It opens the door for some problems that we could have. Just because other counties have a policy like this, just because we have one that Brian has worked on and, um, is pretty good as far as what it limits and, and, and how it's worded and all that. Just because, just because of that, doesn't necessarily mean we should... that, just because of that doesn't necessarily mean we should do it. You talk about the, some concerns that could be overlooked, and I don't want to get into all the hypotheticals because at some point, you're going to say, well, is that really going to happen? I understand where this is coming from, and I think the intentions to bring it forward are good, looking to find a way to hire some more people who are qualified, to do jobs that we need people to do. And I honestly believe that's the intent with bringing this forward, and I can appreciate that. But as a matter of policy, I think the existing, the existing policy we have preventing, preventing the employment of relatives is a better policy. I think it's the way we should stick.
With that being said, I come from a family of police officers and deputies. My father was a police officer. My brother was a police officer. I think when you're in that particular group of family, father, son, uncles, aunts, and the same with the fire department, if you're a father, naturally, your son probably wants to be a firefighter when he grows up. I know they start young and say, I want to be a firefighter, but that's my reasons for going along with this. I think that they should be able to be what they want to be when they grow up.
I watched the video that we did of positively pulving. I don't know if you noticed, but there were three little kids pushing that fire engine. And I think it's amazing when you talk to families in public service and you have three, four, or more generations of people who, in their family, devote their lives to public safety, and that's a good thing. But it does open a door. When you talk about, you know, someone's been a firefighter, for example, for a long time, they have a son that's coming in. It creates at least a potential issue when you talk about hiring someone who's a family member who wants to follow in the father's footsteps, but good practice, good employment practice have to go first, like Brian said a minute ago. And so when you, you have an issue there with potentially hiring a family member of one of your employees over someone who may be more qualified. And I understand that's a hypothetical, and I understand that being a family member, under this proposed policy, being a family member doesn't guarantee you anything except an opportunity to apply. I think it's a slippery slope.
I want to thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Chuck.
I want to thank Sandy for your support. And you know, when you, when you have a place where you cohabitate, and it's a different environment, you know, for the fire system and stuff, and I appreciate the fact that you've noticed that, but you know, when we came, I came to Brian with this, and he did, he threw up some flags, and I understand, and it's the same thing that you were talking about today. But I reached out in the private, and I talked to a lot of human resource directors and stuff in the private, and that are doing the nepotism, and I asked them, you know, point blank, you know, what's, you know, what's the issues? And they said, they're the same issues if we have them, and we deal with them the same way. I think the direct report is pretty common, but outside of that, I think that we would be missing people who live in the county already, who possibly, you know, would want to stay and work in the county because they've seen their parents do it. Long-term employees versus people who come and go, I think we're missing out on a good opportunity, especially in the fire department. And I'm thankful that you did such hard work on it, and I think the compromise between you and I, I think it's a great thing. Thanks.
It's my understanding that, Brian, that the way we're addressing this possible inability for a son to follow in his father's footsteps was to require the different location and the different, you can't report to the same person. I think we're leaving something out if we don't recognize the fact that it's not a perfect world, and if you get in a hiring situation where it's one of your own relatives, and then you possibly even unintentionally exclude somebody of a different race, somebody that's, you know, not in the family, that they lose that opportunity. And that's why I thought we were trying to discuss this and upgrade our policy is because we are a much larger county, and we don't want to have a reputation that, yeah, you know, this guy's dad was a firefighter. He'd make a great firefighter. He knows all about it, to the exclusion of someone else that's trying to, you know, come into that career in that pattern. So I was just looking at it a little bit like that.
If I could respond to that, I pointed out those four primary issues, but additionally, in the policy and your backup, if you could bear with me, addressed the appearance or existence of favoritism, family-related disruptions to the workplace is further addressed, specifically says in the policy. To avoid conflicts of interest, employees are prohibited from participating in employment decisions, terms and conditions, auditing or approving work or financial transactions, hiring, job assignment, evaluations, promotions, compensation, benefits, disciplinary actions, personnel actions. So to kind of get to the point you're bringing, that's very explicitly in the policy, and that is a prohibition against, an employee can't do that when it involves a relative.
You know, having them own, then employer, you know, difficult to, getting harder and harder to find individuals to come work for you. You know, I have fathers, sons, daughters, wives, cousins, my own cousins. I've had to fire my own cousins before. You know, you've just got to treat everybody the same. And I'll tell you the truth, my own family, I'm harder on them than I am the other employees. So, you know, as long as we do what we're supposed to do and do it right, I don't have see much problem with it as long as it's set up the way you got it set up. So I appreciate you taking the time because I know it's went back and forth. But, you know, times is different, and like Chuck said, it's just, and a few of, Sandy said also, is, you know, when you get a firefighter or policeman, usually their son wants to be, or daughter would like to be the same, follow in the same footsteps. So, you know, in the past, we've just been missing out on maybe some good employees.
Other comments? Thanks so much, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Number five is discuss action to approve issuing a notice to proceed with the East Hiram Sewer Improvement Project to John D. Stevens and approve the 30% guaranteed maximum price not to exceed $9,181,364.50, post three. Ms. Ashmore.
We'll start with, the award was made to John D. Stevens for the progressive design build contract for the East Hiram Sewer, and that is the sewer that, on the south end, starts at the Greystone complex down on 92 and Ridge Road, and provides gravity service north to Licklog Creek, a pump station, and then a force main that will be our first connection with, under the Sweetwater Agreement with Cobb County. We proceeded with a 30% design, and the first thing we did was find that we had some assumptions that were changing in an exciting way, and we started factoring in some of the commercial industrial development potential that would be tributary to this project, and also looked that if we're serving that industrial, commercial industrial area, that there's an opportunity to take that Ingalls Pump Station that we were talking about earlier and bring it into this East Hiram Sewer and send it to Cobb County, which is whereby gravity it's tributary to. We have, we have reached the 30% milestone and are bringing forward a 30% design estimate or guaranteed maximum price of $9,181,364.50. This is a, we discussed this last week with our Water and Sewer Advisory Board, and let me just be clear, this is the entire project just based on a very, based on a 30% design effort. So the design is not complete, so a guaranteed maximum price at this point reflects certain contingencies, and we expect that at every stage beyond this, we will be refining that number in a downward direction. And have already started talking with John D. Stevens and Friesen Nichols about ways to optimize this, to change pipe materials and to not, not to risk the integrity of the project, but to provide better value. And so we will continue, we would continue to work with them on that. Our next step is easements, getting permission on the property, complete the design effort, and get underway. We're already in coordination with GDOT because we will also be in that 92 construction, will be out there at the same time they're still working. But we are preparing to have stubouts to this project so that the sewer line can continue up Licklog Creek and serve those tributary areas to the west.
This did go before Water and Sewer Advisory Board?
Yes, we did. And in fact, the next three items, all were under the Water and Sewer Advisory Board last week. I forgot to mention the funding on this. There's a Greystone contribution, a general fund contribution, and then water funds.
Completion date, general idea?
We are, let me see if I put that in your package. We are still looking at being done in October of next year in time for, prior to the time that Greystone is planning on moving in.
You knew I was asking, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Lori. Guess we're going to hear from you some more. Number six is, any other questions on that one? Number six then is discuss action to approve the amendment to the scope services with Tetra Tech Incorporated for the copper mine RWF Treatment Capacity Expansion Project to include the reuse pump station upgrades and equipment tax incentives assistance at a total of $35,800, post three.
Thank you again. The, as we've been moving forward with the design for our copper mine wastewater expansion, we identified that the water needs of the system are going to exceed our ability to provide them under, out with our existing reuse system. The water that we use within the plant is not the drinking water we supply to people's homes. We use, we use a portion of our effluent and recycle it and use that as plant water. And so this reuse pump station is to supply our water needs within the, within the plant property. The, we use potable water as a backup source if that pump station is down. So this is a real integral part and of being cost-effective in our operation. We also were working with Tabitha about how do we get, take advantage of tax credits, tax savings, and this is a, being a water pollution control project, we're eligible for a refunding of our taxes, but we're going to need some additional support through construction to capture that data and assist our finance department in preparing that rebate, those rebate forms.
Any questions? Moving on to number seven is discuss action to purchase Kubota membranes on quotation number 081419-1-BEC-RomeoOscar in the amount of $546,980 for the replacement of existing membranes at the county's wastewater treatment plant. Ms. Ashmore.
Okay. Let me start by, so I don't forget, that the last item and this item are funded through the Water and Sewer Renewal and Extension Fund. The, we have four MBR plants, and they are the membrane bioreactor plants, and I think each of you has seen the membranes that we have. We purchase replacement membranes on an annual basis. We're coming to you early in the fiscal year to purchase 6,800 membranes. That is out of a total membranes we have is 31,600. We have been replacing them on a, on an as-needed basis. We started several years ago with damaged membranes at our copper mine plant prior to the headworks being improved. But we are also at this point now dealing with older membranes that are already at 14 years old at the upper Sweetwater Plant. They generally have a lifespan of about 10 years. So we've exceeded that life. We're starting to see some of the membrane fabric actually peeling off the plate so that it is, it functionally means we can't put as much water through the plant, decreasing our capacity. So we're asking for this. It is, it's early in the fiscal year to be requesting this, but it's got a three-month lead time before we will see those, and our plant staff has just finished putting in the ones that were purchased in fiscal year 2019. This is the only cost associated with this. Our staff does the replacement with our own forces.
Questions? Thank you again, Ms. Ashmore. New business number eight is discuss action to adopt resolution 19-27 requesting that the Federal Aviation Administration release approximately 2.964 acres from federal obligations for the purpose of constructing the new aviation academy. And we're pleased to have the airport director, Mr. Terry Tibbetts, with us to answer any questions and give us an overview of this.
Okay, real briefly, I'll explain why this is necessary. Everyone is aware that the state of Georgia intends to build an aviation academy, they're calling it. It's an AMP school, Aviation Maintenance School, that is planned to be built at the Paulding County Airport. And what people may not realize is that the funding for the property at the airport was reimbursed to the county at a rate of 90% from the FAA. So the FAA paid for the 770-plus acres at the airport at a 90% rate, and that gives them a say in how that property is being used. And there's a rather complex process that we have to follow when we request for that property to be released back for some non-aviation purpose. And for technical reasons, a maintenance school is considered a non-aviation purpose because it doesn't involve flying airplanes, it involves the maintenance of those aircraft, and the state has a requirement through state law to own property that they're building a building on. So there's a lot of technicalities in dealing with the various government entities involved here. And so early on in the process, we got with Chattahoochee Tech, the Technical College System of Georgia, Properties Commission, Georgia Properties Commission, Airport Authority, your board, and we came to the conclusion that the best place, at that time, we thought to put the school, was going to be on that property just adjacent to the main terminal building, and we had set aside 3.9 acres that we were going to request from the FAA for release so that the school could be built on that property. We prepared that release package, 400-plus pages, sent it into the FAA, and they have responded back that they consider that property to be, to retain value for aviation purposes, and they have requested that we seek an alternative location for the property, or for the project. So we have met again with So we have met again with the school and with Georgia Properties Commission, and our backup site is the site right as you come onto the airport property on the right-hand side, where the fire station and the 911 center were originally intended to be located. The 911 center has now been built in the New Hope Technology Park, and the county has purchased property to put the fire station in that area on the north side of 278, instead of on the property there at the airport. And so that makes this property potentially, potentially releasable from the FAA, and they have informally notified us that they would look favorably on that location. So in order to make that an official request, we have to move forward with providing all of the documentation, so that we can get a federal determination on the releasability of that property. Because the Airport Authority and the Board of Commissioners are cosponsors on the airport, it is required that both boards have a public vote in a public meeting like this, to voice your support for this project, so that I can include that in the request that we send forward to the FAA. In other words, they don't want to release property unless all sponsors of that property are in agreement that that's what they want to do. So that's what we're asking you to do today, is basically, we're moving the location from the east side of the terminal to the west side of the terminal, to where the old fire station plan was. And our board, the Polton County Airport Authority Board, has tentatively scheduled a called meeting for next Thursday, assuming that you approve this action today, tonight, then we will have a called meeting to do likewise. Basically, we will approve virtually the same resolution that you have before you today. And at that point, I'll be able to submit the package to the FAA and formally request for permission for this property to be released. So it, it is just a normal part of the process that we're going through as we're negotiating with the FAA on where the school is going to be located, and basically, they are asking us to move the location from where we had selected to this location, and we believe that this is, still remains a very viable location, and in fact, has some advantages, such as longer road frontage, better access to the utilities, and so forth. So it's not a horrible solution for us by any stretch of the imagination, but it is part of the process that I, I do need your board to approve this resolution, so that the FAA has before them a consensus from both cosponsors that we're in agreement on this. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Terry, you alluded to this, I think, just a second ago, but just for clarity, this site, even though it wasn't the first site that we requested, does it meet all of the requirements that the college system has for having that school and having that school work the way they need that school to work?
We believe it does, yes.
Okay. And I guess it's a good thing we put that fire station somewhere else in.
Any other questions?
I think it's important to note that all six members of the state delegation are in strong support and collaboration with all the efforts for this Aviation Maintenance Academy. So, real team effort to get this through.
It has been, yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Terry. That is the conclusion of regular business, public participation on non agenda items, no one has signed up. We do have requirement or need to go into executive session for pending and potential litigation, and I would accept a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion, Dave.
Motion back. Mr. Davis is our second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Kager. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned to go into executive session. Okay, we call the regular session, the regular work session, back to order, and we don't have any motions to bring after the executive session, so I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move for adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Christopher Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Kager. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.